Thank you. Welcome, everybody, to tonight's meetings. We actually have a public hearing that we're going to take care of. First of all, we have about five minutes allotted for that. And then we'll get into the regular scheduled city council meeting. So bear with us, the audience, as we go through that process. We are having a public hearing. I do call this meeting to order. And Sandy, would you take role, please?
Brian Smith. Steve Hackett. Deb Fenske. Paul Hagan. Alan Keeland. Scott Pachatsky. Dave Shamble. Paul Meo. John Lockwood. Gillian Peterson. Eric Olson. Ten present, we have a quorum.
Thanks, Sandy. The purpose of the hearing, I'm going to read this in just for the record. This is an ordinance amending Chapter 17 zoning code regarding schools, public buildings, and public recreational and community buildings and grounds and commercial zones. Notice hereby given that the common council of the city of Opaaca will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, May 21, 2013, at 6:25 PM in the council chambers of City Hall 111 South Main Street, Opaaca, Wisconsin, to hear testimony on whether to change language in Chapter 17 of the municipal code zoning ordinance to allow public schools, parochial schools, colleges, including dormitories, public libraries, public museums, art galleries, municipal buildings, except sewage disposal plants, garbage incinerators, public warehouses, and penal or correctional institutions and asylums. Public recreational and community buildings and grounds has a special use permit in the B1 neighborhood business, B2 central business, B3 general commercial, B4 strip commercial, and B5 planned commercial district. The hearing will be for the purpose of giving an opportunity for any person interested in the attorneys or agents to be heard. A copy of the proposed change is at the city planning and development office. So at this time, I would take testimony in favor of the change in the ordinance. If there's anybody... That's how I feel sometimes.[152.22][152.22](Laughter). At this time, I'll take testimony in favor of the subject. If there's anybody that would like to give testimony in the change in this ordinance in favor of, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record. Anybody that would like to give testimony in favor? Any testimony in favor? If not, we'll take testimony in opposition. Is there any testimony in opposition to the change in this ordinance? If not, we will take this up at... This is an ordinance change, so we will discuss this during our council meeting tonight. I do declare this, public hearing closed at 6:31 PM. Okay, next, then, we'll go right into the regular council meeting. Welcome, everybody, to the regular scheduled May city council meeting. Of course, if you've been following us, we've actually had two council meetings this month, and that's the plan that we will be doing in the future if things work out. I do call this meeting to order. And we are going to start this part of it with our Youth of the Month. And we have Scout Spadoni is our youth. And teacher, Mrs.?
Hunter.
Mrs. Hunter is going to make the presentation.
Should I come in here?
Yeah, please.
Thank you very much. This is Scout Spadoni. My name is Pat Hunter. I'm a first grade teacher at WLC. I've known Scout for a really long time. I know her very well. I knew her before she was born, and I visited her in the hospital the day that she was born. So have I seen this young lady blossom into the student of the month that she is today? You bet. Scout is now a first grader at WLC. She excels in all academic areas, but there's way more to Scouty than that. Scout, do you spend all your time on schoolwork?
No.
No, she does not. Besides being an avid reader, I don't know how she finds the hours to do all the things that she does and how lucky she was to have parents and grandparents that do all the driving to see that Scouty gets to all these activities. These are just a few of Scouty's favorites. Soccer, T-ball, basketball, wrestling, choir, church day camp, dance lessons, destination imagination, Sunday School, and downhill skiing. I'm sure I've missed a few. We all hear today's employers are looking for employees who are well-rounded and have problem-solving skills and academic excellence. Well, guys, just wait till you get Scouty, because she's them all wrapped into one. Now, I am not Scouty's first grade teacher. Her first grade teacher is Rebecca Baumann, and although she lives in New London, she is here with us tonight to help Scout celebrate. Thanks, Becca. I am Scout's reading teacher. I teach the high ability group. And Scout is a role model in my class, not only academically, but by her behavior as well. She is a real leader who is looked up to by her peers. And so, ladies and gentlemen, I am honored tonight to nominate Scout Charlotte Spadoni as Opaaca's May Student of the Month. Love you, Scout. And just in case you didn't believe me, this says the certificate is awarded to Scout Spadoni for Outstanding Youth of the Month Award, City of Opaaca, and it's signed by our mayor, Brian Smith. Thank you very much.[395.31][395.31](Applause).
Would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where its stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's get through some other items at the beginning here. We need the clerk open meeting statements. Sandy, you want to read that for us?
This meeting and all of the meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with the Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
Okay, and then you also need to take role for us for this regular meeting.
Brian Smith. Steve Hackett. Deb Fenske. Paul Hagan. Alan Keeland. Scott Pachatsky. Dave Shamble. Paul Meo. John Lockwood. Gillian Peterson. Eric Olson. Ten present, we have a quorum.
Thanks, Sandy. Council members and audience, you can see this on your agenda. We have the consent agenda. These are all the items that we're going to vote on with one motion. Are there any items that council members would like to see move from the consent agenda to the regular agenda? Anybody? If not, then we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Lockwood, that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Okay, going to the regular agenda. Sandy, you had a couple of handouts tonight?
I did. Under Number 6 consent agenda, letter A, monthly reports, the city administrator clerk's report for the month of April 2013, and OpaacaOnline.net monthly report from Josh Warner were distributed. Under Number 9A, Number 4, Opaaca Police Department 2012 Annual Report was distributed. And under Number 10, Number 3, Unfinished Business, a memo from John Edelbeck was distributed. And that's all.
Okay, thanks. Anything else, council members, that you see that we should adjust? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the regular agenda with those additions.
I'll make a motion to approve the regular agenda with the additions. Second.
Motion by Shamble, second by Hackett. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Okay, under announcements, we have a certificate of appreciation to Brian Johnson for his 15 years of service to the city. Brian is not here tonight. He works in the Public Works Department. And we'll ask John to get him that certificate. Thanks, John. Okay, and then we're on to what everybody's been waiting for all night long. Here are the award winners of the Public Works Week coloring contest. John, we'll turn it over to you.
Well, as many people know, this is a time-honored tradition in the city of Opaaca. They were probably on our 15th or 16th year, so pretty soon it'll be almost generational. So that's interesting. But this week, actually, is National Public Works Week, and we celebrate that by a number of different things. We will be reading a proclamation tonight. We do conduct tours this time of year at the end of the school year of our facilities. We have this coloring contest, which we'll be talking about tonight. We have a cookout. Our superintendents will actually cookout for our employees to thank them for their service over the last year. And we fly our banners. So you might have seen our Public Works banners are out all month. Well, this is the actual week that they're applicable, so trying to get our money's worth. But what we do every year is we hand out flyers to the second graders in the city of all the schools and ask them to help us celebrate National Public Works Week. And they are returned to us. The mayor then goes through them and selects winners every year. So this year, we have seven winners. And what I'd like to do is read your name off if you could come up. And if you have a few words you'd like to tell us about your picture or anything you'd like to share, we can do that. So why don't we plot after every name so we recognize each of the winners here? Hope I get all the names correct. Andrew Lehman, Mrs. Anderson's class, and WLC. Congratulations. Carson Guile, Mrs. Riggles' class, WLC. Garrett Peterson, Mrs. Faldest's class, WLC. Acadia LaBeuf, Mrs. Moan's class, WLC. Congratulations. Reese Verdin, Mrs. Moan's class, WLC. Idalis Furmanek, Mrs. Moan's class, WLC. And Naveya Tesen, Mrs. Hanky's class, chain school. Now, I will say that these are also not even talented artists, but pretty intelligent, because I quiz them when I go in their class and ask them questions about public works. They did a pretty good job this year, so these are pretty talented students. I think it's important to note that we also have... Maybe we should have Mrs. Moan stand up. We have three winners from her class. This is her last year of teaching, so...[834.87][834.87](Laughter). I have been told that there is bragging rights at the school with whatever teacher gets the most winner, so...[844.87][844.87](Laughter). I don't know if that's true. Is there anybody like to share anything with us about their pictures or about coloring or about your classmates or anything? You're on live TV.
This has been a very good school year, and so I would like to thank it all for my teacher, Mrs. Moan, and my principal, who is not here right now, Principal Earthstammer. This is a big honor.
Well, I do have a small token of appreciation for their efforts. I told all of them that they did not have to share this. This is their gift certificate. No one else is in their family. But if they want to share it, they can. So here you go.
Congratulations again. And will we want to take one more picture here before they go? Okay, we can put these out front.
Hold those, and then we'll stand behind you? Anybody want to take any pictures? Put John and I out of the picture?
Yeah.[941.41][941.41](Laughter). I think they can edit that out.
Okay, thank you very much. Take your pictures. They're put in the hallway between the library and City Hall for the entire year. So you can go and check it out and brag about your award-winning coloring contest.
And we'll figure out a way to get them to you. All right?
Oh, yeah, thanks a lot.
Oh, okay. Is this the proclamation?
Yep.
Okay, next on the announcements, then, is the National Public Works proclamation. I am going to read that. This is National Public Works Week, City of Opaaca, Wisconsin, Office of the Mayor. National Public Works Week proclamation, May 19 through May 25, 2013. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of and understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operations of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collections, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities as well as their planning, design, and construction is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the Opaaca Public Works Department is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Brian Smith, Mayor of the City of Opaaca, Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19 through May 25, 2013, as National Public Works Week in the city of Opaaca, Wisconsin. And I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Thank you. Okay, next, then, we have a presentation of the 2012 Police Department Annual Report. And we have one of the commissioners here, Jim Schultz, is here tonight. Jim, you want to stand at the podium? Or you want to just use the microphone? Which, you're good there?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Are you comfortable behind the microphone?
I'm especially glad to be able to follow all of the precious children. Thank you very much. Seriously, thank you, Mayor Smith, members of the council. I know that you guys have a lot to do tonight. And the nuts and bolts of the annual report are in your folder, including charts and graphs that make it actually very easy to digest. And I'm hoping at some point you will actually take a look at the report that Chief Goke has prepared. Knowing that you have a lot on your plate, I will be brief. The chief has agreed to... If this goes over three minutes, he's going to deploy his taser. Once again, our police department did everything that was asked of them in 2012, and they did it again under budget. As a matter of fact, in seven of the eight different areas of department management, the Opaaca PD came in under budget. Only one. The meg operations went over, and that was only by 1.5%. Less than $900 for the whole year. Chief Goke and his team have been very successful at accurately predicting department costs and then holding those costs within the budget despite a noticeably unstable economy. They've also demonstrated a knack for identifying and obtaining grants and other sources of alternate funding to help defray department costs to the taxpayers. The result is a budget that has gone up less than 10% over the last five years inclusive. And the job is not getting any easier. Opaaca is not the sleepy little rural town it once was. We have improved highway access. It has made it easy for more people to come here. They get here faster and easier. And unfortunately, not all of the people coming here are tourists. Geographically speaking, our town is a bigger place than it was just a few years ago. Police presence is required from the airport and the industrial park on the east to Foxfire Golf Course, that neighborhood, and the apartment complex on the west. It's a little over six miles by the shortest route from one side of our town to the other. And it means a lot more to do and a lot larger area to cover. Last week alone, there were three separate incidences of shoplifting at Fleet Farm. And when the officer on duty is at Fleet Farm, that means that somebody downtown or on the west side is not seeing police presence. A week ago, the front page of the Opaaca County Post reported that heroin is a major reality now in our county. And we would be naive to think that it's not here in our city, too. Ron Pelkey, who's a county substance abuse counselor, told the County Post that there's a serious problem with drug abuse today. He says that heroin use alone in the last two years is higher than it has been in over 40 years. Police are finding hard evidence of heroin sales right here where we live. People are finding discarded needles in local parking lots. Increased abuse and theft of prescription drugs is adding to the problem. You'll find a special section in the annual report just about the improper use and abuse of prescription drugs. The availability of illegal or illegally obtained drugs has become evident in our schools. I found that hard to believe, but a half a dozen instances of... Not aspirin, I'm talking drugs, at our high school and in our middle school. Four separate serious drug offenses in our middle school last year. So far this year, the PD has responded to a half dozen incidents involving firearms or other weapons. Robberies and shootings that were once unheard of here are not nearly as uncommon as they once were. These are just some of the challenges that face our department 24 hours a day, seven days a week, nights, holidays, and weekends. And it seems that each year, because they have no other choice, our community asks more of our police department and still doesn't want it to cost anymore. And even though the members of the police commission have offered, the chief and the department have not asked for help. They're certainly not asking for sympathy. What they are asking for is your support. They'd really like to know that you're behind them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions of Jim? Comments? Or of the chief, for that matter, too? Thank you, Jim. Appreciate that. Anything that you would like to add to that, chief? Okay, very nice. Okay, let's go to the public input part of the meeting. This is for anybody that is in the audience that would like to speak to the council about any item that is not on our agenda tonight. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the council, please step up to the podium and give your name and address for the record and limit your discussion to three minutes or less. Is there anybody that would like to give some public input? If not, we'll move on to department announcements and reports. And we'll start with Gene, our city treasurer.
Nothing to report. It's all the same upstairs in the treasures department.
Okay, thanks, Gene. And then we'll go on to Peg Burington, our library director.
Thank you, Mayor Smith. We do have a new story walk at Swan Park now, and that is a collaboration between the Park and Rec Departments and the library. So you can take your hike and read your book at the same time. And you'll kind of access that behind the new sledding hill. Also, we have a free little library now at Swan Park where you can actually pick a book up and read it in the park or take it home with you and then just return another book in its place. So that's another collaboration with the Park and Rec Department. We're going to be starting our Dig Into Reading Summer Library program for children and teens. And that's going to be starting the 10th of June. And all of the registration materials are ready right now. You can go into the library and register there or online. And we are going to be closed this weekend, Saturday, and the following Monday for Memorial Day. SLAG is having a rummage sale on June 8 during the community-wide rummage sale. So we hope that you'll stop in the library and purchase some items from SLAG. Thank you, Mayor Smith.
Thanks, Peg. Okay, let's go to John Edelbeck, our director of public works.
Okay, my report is found on page 41 of your packet. As you know, we're working on State Street, Bailey Street. Bailey Street was the final course of asphalt was put down today. There is still some work that's needed out there in regards to landscaping and some minor work. But we're letting the pavement cure a little bit, the asphalt cool. And we'll be getting back on it probably early next week to finish the landscaping, and then that will be open. So that project went pretty quickly. State Street will take a little bit longer. We have some sanitary sewer work remaining. You see the contractor is doing some water main service work right now. We did have some property owners take up the city's offer to replace their private water service, so they'll be assessed for that work. And the county is putting in some concrete pavement from the Park and Rec driveway to the south to Badger Street. You see, that's what they're digging there with the large equipment. And that pavement in the past has pushed, that asphalt has pushed because of the trucks. And the county decided to go with a concrete pavement there instead to prevent that pushing. So we have curb work ahead, driveway work, some storm sewer repair work that the city crews will do. So we're moving along. It's gone very well so far, that project. A number of other projects. We had a water leak repaired, some other pavement repairs throughout the city. The city staff has been doing some cleanup of the old QuickTrip building. And now the contractor's in there. And that paving work proceeded today as well. Spring work items for each of the departments really keeps us pretty busy in the spring. Leaf and brush pickup citywide has been completed as well, and that was delayed because of the weather. Our solids have been land-applied from the wastewater treatment plant to farm fields and used for soil enhancement and fertilizer. And our quantities are down because our staff has actually clarified off the clean water from the bio solids and send that back through the plant. So because of their work, we've been able to save a substantial amount of money. Our digister cover project is going on at the treatment plant, and we approved, the council approved, equipment purchase. We're in the middle of design right now on that rehab project. Public Works Week, we talked a little bit about South Park project. Our staff has been involved in that. That design project is proceeding. The East Central Wisconsin Regional Plant Commission working with Park and Rec and UW Extension. We're working on a pedestrian bicycle plan. It'll be a map that'll identify existing assets and curb... Or sidewalk, off-road, trails, paved shoulders that are accessible, and then origin destinations throughout the city that that map can be used by anyone throughout the community. Cross-connection control program. I don't know, nobody's really asked me about that, but that work has been proceeding. With hydro design, we're inspecting all commercial and industrial. Facilities are being inspected for cross-connections with recommended corrections. And city staff is doing the residential. So if you do have any questions on that, any of your constituents, contact you. Just have them get ahold of me, and I can go through and explain the program. It's a DNR-mandated program. As well as our mercury minimization program. We're working with the schools, industry, education, school... Sorry, dentists, others, and trying to minimize our mercury in our wastewater treatment plant as well. And lastly, with the recycling center, we were able to get a chipper in. Country Stone did chip wood that was out there, a substantial amount. And it is for sale now. sale now. We have chips as well as compost. And I just picked up, Alan saw me, I was picking up some compost out there the other day. Very nice material, and it's $5 for a truckload. We only allow it for residential use. We don't allow commercial sale unless you want to hand load up your pickup with a shovel. We don't allow any commercial equipment coming in there and loading up equipment. Other than that, we're a third of the year, third of the year through the budget. Street Department is at 33%, that third. Our Water Division is at 31. Sewer Division is at 21%, and our snow and ice control budget is at 102%. So can't snow till January 1. Hope everybody's okay with that.
Thanks, John. Comments? Aaron Johnson, Parks and Rec Director.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to go through a few of the new things we have come up this summer. Right now, we're taking registration for a number of new classes. Youth nature class, photography class, Lego classes, which basically kind of just teach kids about, well, besides playing with Legos, kind of engineering principles. Also have a new gymnastics session and challenger soccer camp, which involves, we actually have semi-pros come over from Europe and teach it, and the kids get a kick out of them. Along with that is a lot of our, oh, did you have a question?
That was good, though, a kick out of it.
We also have a lot of our traditional programming going on, swimming lessons, softball, baseball, T-ball, all of that, and that is about to start. We had our opening day this last Saturday. All of the youth softball and baseball teams are out at Swan Park. We were lucky, got a nice day, no rain, so that went very well. And we start our regular season, actually, the day after Memorial Day. I did want to give a quick update on the school building. Not much news right now, other than we're kind of just, John Hart is working with Rick with a lot of the details, and we are, we can't set to close until all of the contingencies on the zoning goes through. So we're kind of waiting on that. Let's see, we are, me and John and I are having a meeting with BRM, people who are the project manager who's taking care of the sled hill right now. We'll get an update on that. We haven't spoke with them in some time now, so we'll have more information on that tomorrow. And then, other than that, we're, well, actually, I will go back to this. John mentioned we have been meeting on South Park. MSA has come forward with a couple proposed designs of the shelter and site plans and such, and that has been very interesting to see their take on it, and I think we've got a lot of good ideas from them, and we'll move forward with that process. And then, other than that, we're basically just preparing for weekend events every weekend from now until July 20th. We have rather large events, either at Swan or other parks, mostly Swan Park, for the summer here, so. If anyone has any questions? All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yep, thanks. Chief Goke.
Thank you, Mayor. As John mentioned, we're at 33% of the budget here. We've expanded about 31%, just a little bit over 31, 31.23% of the budget here. To dovetail Jim's presentation a little bit on increased activities that we've seen, a couple of weeks ago, we executed a search warrant. We recovered about five ounces of marijuana in addition to a couple of handguns. That investigation was finalized last Friday. We also arrested a third person for armed robbery, which was basically a drug deal going bad. And that suspect was out of Oshka. She's currently in jail on a $5,000 bond. We are, we've been working today with state officials. We're in the process of cleaning up a meth lab right now, which was discovered on the northeast side of town. And the state is going to be processing that because of the vast cost associated with meth labs. Because of the chemicals and everything that's involved, that's hazardous material. So we have to call in the state, and they basically take over the scene, and they are responsible for all the costs. And some of these cleanups can be five figures very easily and very quickly, and that is in the process of being cleaned up, actually, right now. We're a quarter of the year, or yeah, quarter of the year into our new propane use in one of our squad cars, and have been able to finally track some numbers and put them together. And we're probably saving between $50 and $70 a month per the one squad. Now, that also takes into consideration the lease costs that we have to upfront. It's like $205 a month for the equipment that we lease to run the propane. So this is a savings after all of those expenses. You know, ideally, we wanted to at least break even because propane is a much cleaner fuel to burn and less pollutants, but any money that we can save off of that is definitely a benefit. In the packet itself, you'll see that we did send one old squad car to auction. Old meaning it was 2008 with over 124,000 miles. We got about $2,900 for that, and that's after the auction fee, so that's actually a pretty good price for a Crown Vic with that many miles on it. There's two letters of commendation in the packet also for, one for Sergeant Mario Grisaffa, the other one was for Officer Paul Benchwell, and that was for their response in handling an armed domestic abuse call in which the suspect fired several rounds from his handgun during the altercation, and he was safely taken into custody within about 30 minutes. So that ended peacefully. Other than that, the rest is informational.
Thanks, chief. Any questions? Comments? All right. Henry, city administrator.
Well, it's a hard report to follow. In my office, this is the time of year where we process a lot of licenses, liquor licenses and sellers' licenses. One thing we did this year, we've reached out to our licensees to see if they are open to the idea of maybe a multi-year license. For those on Judiciary Committee, a few years, a few months ago, kind of floated that idea and talked about it, and we're getting some feedbacks. I don't have anything to really disclose tonight yet, but hopefully in a coming month or so, we'll have some information, and maybe we can look to do a multi-year license, which will save some time, be a little more efficient, and it wouldn't cost us any more money because we basically would double the fee. Like the chief, we are looking at a propane conversion in one of our taxi vehicles, and we're moving forward on bringing forth something on that here soon. John, I've been working with John Edelbeck on a couple of economic development projects as well as Rhonda and the Planning and Development Office. Midwest compressor on our east gateway is in the midst of a nice expansion, so that'll be a nice project. South Park, a lot of discussion on that already. The one thing I probably, I can report on that project is we did get our 50% grant advance, so it was a check, maybe $160, $178,000, $168,000 that we received from the DNR. So that was good. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thanks, Henry. Any questions? Comments for Henry? Okay, if not, let's move on to the action items. We have City Planning Commission, we have a special use permit for Scott and Diane Bickley for its, doing business as Little Wolf Automotive, which is 225 Southwestern Avenue. This is not a change in what was being done at that premises, but it does take a special use permit to operate there, and that's the only reason that this request is forward. They're not asking to do, well, the only thing that they are asking to do that would be a little bit different is that they were talking about the sale of some automobiles there, and from what I understand, they're not going to do that at this time? Although they would have the, if we, if we okay this special use permit, they would have the ability to do that. And I think they were talking about, if I remember right, at City Planning, it was up to three vehicles that they would be selling at one time. There was some concern from one local residence that has a business across the street to make sure that the property was cleaned up and that there weren't any junk vehicles sitting on the property. They assured us, the Bickleys assured us that that would not be the case, that they would, it's in their best interest to keep the property clean also, so. Besides that, we did not hear any other comments on that. I know, John, you weren't at, you weren't able to attend the city planning, but any other comments? Eric or Dave, you guys were there, too, so.
I'll make a motion. We approve the special use permit for Scott and Diane Bickley at 225 Southwestern Avenue.
Second.
A motion by Shamble, a second by Olson, that we approve the special use permit for Scott and Diane Bickley at 225 Southwestern Avenue. Any discussion? If not, Sandy will call a roll.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Deb Fenske.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Dave Shamble.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
John Lockwood.
I have to abstain.
And Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Nine ayes, one abstain. Motion carried.
Next is, this is an ordinance change. This is an ordinance number 0313-2013. This is amending the City of Opaaca zoning code to allow schools and municipal buildings as special use permits in business zone districts. And if you need to put a sight to what we're talking about, we are talking about the Recreation Center, and we are also talking about the Alternative School, which the city is in the process of purchasing through a donation that we received. Right now, that property is a residential, so that will have to be rezoned to business. But before we did that, we wanted to make sure that everybody was okay with allowing schools and municipal buildings to be in a business zone district versus a residential district. This is the first reading. You will be able to see this. It is posted in the city clerk's office, and also it had to be printed in the paper.
After passing.
After passing, okay. All right, so that was the first reading. Next, we are talking about the rezoning of the Opaaca School District, 415 and 515 School District, School Street. This is ordinance number 0413. This is an ordinance amending Section 17.201, parent 2 of Chapter 17 of the Municipal Code of the City of Opaaca, entitled Amendments to the District Maps. And what they're asking here for, the 415 and the 515 School Street, 415 School Street has to do with the Alternative School. That's the address of the Alternative School. And then the 515 School Street is actually the administration building for the school. And although they're not in the market of selling that property, we thought as long as we were going through the process, we should also have that rezoned at the same time. Again, this is the first reading, unless anybody has any questions. Okay, and then the next one is also a ordinance change, and this is the first reading. This is for the rezoning of 407 School Street, ordinance number 0513, and this is actually dealing with the Recreation Center. And again, this is removing the Recreation Center from a residential property to a, to a business zone property to go along with the first ordinance change that we had before. Again, this is the first reading. We will take action on these at next month's meeting. Okay? I think that's it for city planning. Okay, next, we have new business. We have the Opaaca Farm Shed approval for the 2013 Saturday's Farmer Market on the City Hall Square and expanding the market for Wednesday afternoons and evenings.
Yes, sir. Bonnie Miller, representing Opaaca Farm Shed, is here.
If anyone has any questions, we're just looking at basically doing what we've done in years past. I should mention that we've changed our group name from Opaaca Farm Shed to Sustainable Community Initiative. It's okay. And we've got a lot of great local participation. We'd also like to add a Wednesday evening market to broaden access to, to the wonderful food that the farmers bring into town.
Yeah, could you, and the information is in the packet. Bonnie, can you explain a little bit just briefly so the listening public can see the hours on Wednesday afternoon and?
Sure. Wednesday afternoon, we'd like to operate a special market from 2 until 8. May not go that late, but we just kind of wanted to keep the parameter a little broader to allow for take down or, just to kind of gauge how things are going with that. And then Saturday is 9 until 3, I believe, just as it's been the last few years. And the market would run across the front of the city hall, kind of turned around here, but through, thank you, through on Main Street and, and then around the side on Fulton Street, where the regular vending is. And it would be on the, on the street, sellers sell usually off the back of their trucks or their vans with a little canopy tent we'd set up on the street in the parking spaces, unless you want us up on the grass. Either way.
I think we tried the grass, and it was a concern of, you know, trampling and stuff.
Yeah.
And, you know, just for staffing purposes, in the past, we've given Bonnie the cones, and her folks have kind of coned it off early in the morning. Now, Wednesday might be a little more problematic to get those spots cleared, so we'd probably have to try it for a while. John, you?
Well, I know the chief, we've talked about this before. I think the parking in front of City Hall, we've had vendors drive in normally. They're sitting on the back of their vehicle, which is right next to the travel lane, and I think that's not what we want. We want to make sure that if they are in front of City Hall, that they're, they can use up half of that front sidewalk. Still a law for pedestrians to get by, but we don't want them, you know, it's fine to take material out, but you don't want them sitting behind that vehicle and trying to sell.
So use the diagonal parking. Don't parallel park and put them on the sidewalk, right off the curb.
That's an issue for the chief if they're parallel parking in a diagonal stall, because you're going to get a mixture of parking then if there's an existing car there. My point is, is you don't want them vending right next to the travel lane off the back of their vehicle on those diagonal stalls, because they're right there. One slip on anybody's part, and you're going to get hit.
The sidewalk's pretty wide there, too.
Yeah, I think half of that walk could be used. But we did have some vendors doing that, and I know the chief commented last year on that as well.
So just to be clear, would the parking be, for the vendors, would that be diagonal or horizontal?
Diagonal.
I know it's diagonal, okay.
They'll have to unload their produce and then set up on the sidewalk.
Okay.
See, it's different on Fulton because we have that stripe that way.
Right. And it's a little less travel, too. Okay.
Comments? We're okay with this? Everybody?
Mayor, I'd like to move that council approve the 2013 Farmer's Market for Saturday from 9 to 3, and the expanded market for Wednesday afternoon, evening, from 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Mayo, a second by Lockwood, that we approve of this request from, what was the name of your organization again, Bonnie?
Sustainable Community Initiative.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, Sandy will call a roll.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Deb Fenske.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky.
Aye.
Dave Shamble.
Aye.
John Lockwood.
Aye.
And Jillian Peterson. And Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Good luck, Bonnie.
Thank you very much.
Okay, also under new business, this is a consideration of a one-time bonus payment to Russ Montgomery for his recognition of his time as acting Parks and Recreation Director. If you look on page 261 in your packet, you'll see that there's a memo in there that explains part of the reasoning, or a lot of the reasoning, why I'm proposing this. If you remember right, back when Russ was appointed acting Parks and Rec Director, we had had somebody that, our former director, of course, Jim Ash, had resigned. And Russ, we did ask Russ to step up, and he continued that until about two months ago and when we hired a full-time position for that, for that. And he did accomplish quite a bit during that time that he was there. And you can read what it says in the memo. Questions? Discussion? Anybody?
I think it's well deserved. He went above and beyond the call of duty for quite a few years. So he enhanced that department greatly when he was running it.
Yeah, I think Russ stepped up when we needed him to. I think that's a worthwhile expense.
I'd like to move we approve this one-time bonus payment for $2,500 to Russ Montgomery.
Second.
Motion by Fenske, a second by Keeland, that we approve of the one-time bonus to Russ Montgomery and a recognition of his acting Parks and Rec Director in the amount of $2,500. Any discussion? One comment I would like to make, and this is directed at city staff as well as the public. Don't misunderstand my request here. It has nothing to do with what our other employees have done in our departments. They've done a magnificent job. This is an unusual situation, and I did feel that this was there. But we certainly do appreciate what our other employees have done and will continue to appreciate them in many ways. Any other discussion? If not?
I'm going to call a roll.
Sure. Sandy will call a roll.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Deb Fenske.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Dave Shamble.
Aye.
Scott Porczatski.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
John Lockwood.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Big I.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
I didn't know you could do that.
Did it come twice then?
Okay. All right, next then, we have unfinished business. We have a request from Unique Trends Beauty Salon, which is at 203 North Main Street, to establish a handicap parking stall. And this was brought forward by alderperson Scott Porczatski, so we directed him to find out more information.
Well, I did re-establish contact with him. And as the chief said in one of his emails to me, that was this a one-person request or exactly how it went? Well, I talked to the people at the salon, and the discussion started by one of their patrons asking, "Why don't you have a handicap stall near your corner?" They have them the next block over to the south. And so basically, it is, was initiated by one person. The people at the salon do understand, and I wasn't sure of the, all the parameters we have to run through here or the criteria. So they would understand, you know, it's not a make or break thing for them to establish this stall. Now, and the other thing was this lady that sort of started the request said that at certain times when the Weight Watchers meet in this building that's right on the corner, there's a fair amount of cars there, and that's why she wasn't finding parking. That being said, I did some more investigation on my own. And it appears to me that I don't know if it is really necessary. There isn't a lot of parking that happens on that end of the city or the Main Street. And I talked to a couple of, or one business up there. The business directly next to them is vacant. But I talked to another business, and she was more concerned about the condition of Main Street itself, pavement, than she was about establishing a handicap zone or a parking stall. So I guess I'm, I'm almost to the point where I'm not sure what the criteria is here for us. And maybe John can explain it a little better as far as how many we have to have, why we have two on one block and none on the other. And, you know, it almost looks like we really maybe don't need one just for the sake of one person.
I was able to find, we did an evaluation, I believe that's 99. The date is on that map, but we did a downtown business parking plan. It was adopted by city council at that time and identified, we modified parking stalls to meet state standards on setbacks and such. But we also located handicap stalls on different sides of the street as we went down Main Street. And I don't know the exact number. I'd have to look that up. But we do comply with the state requirement for number of handicap stalls per stalls provided. Obviously, you could, we could put a lot more. And the one across the street is still relatively close, even if they decided to utilize it in front of the bookstore. Bookworld, they could cross the street, and that might be as close as a handicap might be anyway. But, yeah, it was a systematic review of our downtown parking and locating handicap throughout the downtown area spread out, and every block does not have one. On Main Street, though, I believe just about every block does, either east or west. But again, it's.
Yeah, the only thing I noticed was that particular block on the west side of Main Street did not have any at all. Now, there's one in front of the Firehouse Apartments way on the end, but I don't know, I didn't know what your criteria was.
Right.
They fully understood when I talked to them. It's, it's fine. It was kind of a, it kind of got brought up by a customer, and then I kind of followed through. So it kind of looks to me like maybe we do have adequate a situation.
Well, I would say by state standards, we do. And obviously, to add them, the criteria beyond that, there is no criteria beyond state standard that I'm aware of.
You know, we feel it's, you know, it is kind of initiated by one person. Obviously, maybe if more than one was asked in their salon, they may all say, "Yeah, let's put one." So I guess that's where I'm at with it.
So you're not recommending it this time?
Well.
Or you are?
I guess after looking at it myself, I don't really know if there's a need being that one person sort of generally asks why you didn't have one. Now that I've found out what our criteria is and why we have them, how many we have to have.
One thing I would tell you, as somebody who spends a lot of time down by Yule Firehouse Apartments, is it is typically not full of parking.
Right.
I mean, there is ample parking.
Yeah.
Down there. I mean, otherwise, I wish the one that was by Yule Firehouse was towards the middle of the street.
Exactly, yeah.
There's no shortage of parking. I know my tenants don't ever have trouble. There just isn't, there's just not a problem parking.
Yeah, that's what I found out. It kind of got, it was one of those requests that I investigated and so I guess that's where I'm at with it. I don't know how.
So you'd like to permanently table this?
Until the next request, I guess. I don't, you know, I'd like Johnson.
Scott, you're starting to sound more and more like a politician here as well.
I investigated, but it sounds, and then talking to John, it sounds like we are at our kind of mandatory. I kind of assume maybe back in the, when this was all, you know, you had to have a certain amount every block.
I don't know the number offhand, but yes, we're, we meet state standard.
With total parking spaces, we have to have a certain amount, and it doesn't have to be in a certain area, right?
Right.
Okay.
Well, if we did put one on that corner, there'd be one right across the street, too.
Yeah.
And that, we don't have that density anywhere else in the downtown area, right across from each other.
So I guess I would say we should table it.
Okay, sounds good. Let's move on then. This is a proposal for language to be added to the annual drinking water quality report. And this is alderperson Paul Mayo.
The wording is on the last page of the packet. It's highlighted in yellow, and I'll read it. As noted in this, in this report, the city's water is fluoridated. According to the Centers for Disease Control, if a child under six months of age consumes infant formula reconstituted with fluoridated water, there may be an increased chance of adverse health effects. For more information, please consult with a healthcare provider. You can see, it's just about identical to the warning on the water bill, but it's adapted to the water report.
Okay. Want to make that as a form of motion?
Yes, I would move that we use the warning that I just read in our annual water report.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mayo, a second by Keeland, that we approve of the wording that alderperson Paul Mayo has just read. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Scott.
I have one question. Are we going to, going back to the water bill, are we going to include the warnings every month? Did that ever get settled, or how are we going to?
My recollection is two weeks ago, we did vote to include it every month.
Okay. Great.
I was just curious, what's, what changes after six months? That's what you're saying, right? Six months old, what is a child that's seven months old? Why is it different?
The time period, I think, follows the recommendation of the American Dental Association and the Centers for Disease Control in issuing, in their version of issuing such a warning. They identify infants six months of age or under as being particularly susceptible or possibly susceptible to the effects of fluoridated water. So that's, it's not a number I pulled out of the air. It's from warnings that were issued in 2006.
All right. Any other questions? Discussing, John? I assume you've had a chance to look at that, and Mark has too.
Yes, yeah, and as Paul said, it follows the water report. And we would include this in our annual drinking water quality report, which we'll be getting out shortly then.
Okay, sounds good. Steve, go ahead.
I read the whole packet with interest in, I was looking for this wording, and I finally didn't find it till Monday night when I finished the report, the whole packet, because it was on the last page. But, and I read my whole report, and when I got to the last page, I finally said, "Phew, it's about time." But when I called Dr. Robinson and what, he really didn't have a chance to investigate it much either because I called him so late. But this chance of adverse health effects was a little concerning to me. And I really would like to have this tabled a little bit further so we can get some more information. Because the only thing it does, if it does anything, it isn't, it just colors the teeth a little bit. At least, this is what the American Dental Association and the American Academy of Pediatrics says in the guideline that Dr. Robinson pulled off the internet. So this health, this statement, it's almost like you're trying to scare the public into believing they're going to be sick if they use it. And I think we should do a little more investigating than to put this in a report until we've gotten all the facts.
I understand your concerns, Steve, but this, you know, this is just, this is not meant to scare anybody. This is just meant to have mothers or parents of infants six months and under be aware of the possibilities of fluoridated water in infant formula. And it advises them to get instruction from a healthcare provider. It's not meant to scare anybody. It doesn't guarantee there will be adverse health effects, but it's just said there may be an increased chance of adverse health effects. And I think it's a very reasonable warning. Just be careful, is all it says.
I disagree with what you're saying, but we are here to disagree on certain things. And I would like to see it prolonged until somebody has a chance to at least look at it. I had less than 24 hours to really dig into it, and.
I recall during the whole fluoridation thing, Dr. Robinson standing up at that podium and saying, contrary to what you just said, he said, he said, "Kids six months and under should not be ingesting any fluoridated water." I don't know, that's not verbatim, but that's essentially.
I don't recall that, but maybe he did. But today, when I talked with him, he didn't, he didn't see this as being the right wording.
John, I recall that.
We do have a motion to approve this wording on the floor. So although you requested, Steve, to have this tabled, we do have to vote on it.
Oh, yeah, I don't mind voting on it. I just want to say my piece. And I think we should have more time to look into it and get the wording right. Let's not just rush into it and get any wording in it. Let's make sure it's right.
I would agree with Steve on this. I looked on the CDC's website and on two parts of his statement. I think we could be more specific to make it not so alarming. They say, their wording is saying that using it on a regular basis, using it one or two times, you know, from what this, the email's reading seems, you know, something really scary, adverse health effects. I think being more specific in saying on a regular basis and also being more specific on the adverse health effects, being mild or very mild fluorosis, which is how it's stated on the CDC's websites, would be less alarming to those.
Well, we're speaking of children here that are really young. Fluoridated water at point seven parts per million in an infant that weighs, you know, five pounds is a whole lot different than drinking, a 150-pound person drinking fluoridated water. Effects are concentrated in the system. The kidneys filter fluoride out of the bloodstream at about a third of the efficiency of an adult. So the fluoride stays in their system longer. They're more vulnerable to it because of their weight. The water concentration of fluoride is no different in an infant than it is for an adult. So it may be safe for an adult, may not be safe for an infant. That's, that's the whole reason that the American Dental Association in 2006 recommended that infants six months and under should not drink fluoridated water. And again, it does, it's not meant to alarm. It's just meant to make parents aware of possible negative effects of this. And advises to consult a healthcare professional for more definitive information.
I agree on, I agree on the warning. I think that it's good that we're putting it out there. But I think making it stated in a less alarming way, being more specific on it is important. There are nursery water that is sold in stores specifically states on the, on the container to be used in infant formula to reconstitute it. And it says birth and up, and it's contained in its fluoride. So I don't think that it's, you know, I think we need to be specific that it's causing mild fluorosis and not.
There's so much there unknown about this, even for adults. And again, I emphasize that any possible effects for adults are multiplied many times for an infant that weighs so little. And so little, you know, they're just much smaller. And any possible effects are much more pronounced in an infant. And it's not just general fluorosis. There's lots of other studies that have indicated, and I'm not going to get into a lengthy speech about this, but there's also lots of studies that have indicated possible health effects in these, in adults and these water, fluoride concentrations of water, in some cases are very high, and in some cases they're very low. So it's all across the board. There's so much unknown about this. Do we want to take a chance with our infants? And I think it needs to be worded in this way. If we water it down too much, people are just going to look at it and say, "Well, no worry here. Why should I even bother investigating?" This type of wording raises a question mark in a parent's mind. Maybe I should contact my doctor or healthcare provider just to get more information. That's, in a nutshell, why this warning is in here.
Okay. Any new comments? Okay, so if you vote in favor of this, and we'll do a roll call vote here, you are voting in favor of as exactly as it's written on that email, which is on page 262, last page. Steve, you got to learn to eat your dessert first, I think.
Hey, so start reading backwards.
Okay.
But I have a hard time doing that, too, so.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Sandy will call her all.
Dave Shamble?
No.
John Lockwood?
Aye.
Deb Fenske?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
No.
And Jillian Peterson?
No.
Seven ayes, three noes, motion carried.
So, next then, under unfinished business, this is the, we're going to need a motion to convene into closed session, but before we do this, I want to tell the public and the audience that is here tonight, we do reconvene into open session. I cannot tell you what time that's going to be. If you'd like, you could sit out in the hallway and wait. Our camera systems will come back on when we do reconvene into open session at that time. But, again, as I estimated last time, it, about an hour? We went almost hour and 45 minutes last time, so, but again, I'll estimate an hour that I think will be in closed session.
Mayor Smith?
Yes, sir.
I would just like to question why we need to motion to go into closed session for this item.
Attorney Hart?
I believe that substantiated by the agenda posting, which says to, is to deliberate the purchase price for public property. I think that liberations would be in closed session at some point. It will be an open session to take an offer, whatever that offer is going to be, but at this point, I think it's a question of negotiating and deliberating that the, the purchase price of some property, and it is appropriate to be in closed session.
Okay. Okay, so at this time, then, we'd need a motion to convene into closed session.
I move to go into closed session in accordance with Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, parent one, parent E.
Second.
Motion by Hagan, second by Pritchatsky, that we go into closed session, according to what Paul Hagan has just read. Any discussion? If not, Sandy will call her all.
John Lockwood?
Aye.
Deb Fenske?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Jillian Peterson?
Aye.
Dave Shamble?
No.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
And Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Nine ayes, one no, motion carried.
Thanks, Rob.
Okay, welcome back into open session, everybody. We did have a long discussion about the purchase of public property for a public works facility. Again, at this time, we have nothing to, to discuss outside of closed session, this will be a continuance to our June council meeting. Issues, discussions, we have nothing for tonight. Communications and recommendations of the mayor. The only thing I wanted to ask you is, is that we're going to continue with the same council format in June? Everybody's okay with that, the two meetings?
Okay.
So, the first one would be
What about the times? Are we going to have the alternating times, or?
Well, we, when we do the, the ordinance says that we have to start at 6:30, so on the third Tuesday, so we'll have to change the ordinance. So, do we want to do the first one at 6:30, so we're, or are you okay with doing one at 6:00 and one at 6:30?
Probably do it early.
Well, we can, but
We'll have to, anyway.
We're going to at some time, but we're not going to be able to do that by the next meeting. So, the first Tuesday in June is June 4th, and then the second one is the 18th. Do you want to do 6:00 and 6:30, or you want to do?
Yeah, 6:00 and 6:30, and then when we change the ordinance, I'd, I'd be in favor of 6:00 and 6:00.
Okay.
I agree.
Everybody? All right, with that, everybody can get here by 6:00?
First reading be next meeting?
What?
Can your first reading, or the ordinance change be at your next meeting?
Well, we haven't even drafted the ordinance yet.
I think the idea was try to go two cycles, two months, and see how it is. Seems like it's being well-received.
So, okay, so our next meeting will be June 4th at 6:00 PM. There might be some, if there are some public hearings or anything, let's do those at 6:00 o'clock, and then we'll just start the council meeting a little bit later, if that happens, because I think 6:00 will be a little, earlier than 6:00 will be a little tougher to get at.
6:00 or 7:00?
Okay. Anything else for the good of the meeting? If not, we need a motion to adjourn? Move to adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Keeland, second by Lockwood, that the council adjourn till our next regular scheduled council meeting on Tuesday, June 4th, 2013, at 6:00 PM, subject to call. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Thank you, everybody, for attending and watching tonight. Have a great Memorial Day weekend. Thank you, you too.